Good morning, everybody. Welcome to the Planning Commission meeting this morning. A little different process this morning. The first thing we'll do is roll call and then today is the day of the year that we go through the election of the officers. So with that, I guess the roll call noting that Charlie and Jim are absent and everyone else is here and Ron is here from the board. With that, I will turn it over.
Good morning, Commissioners. Brittany Molitor, Planning Director. So at this time, I would like to open it up for nominations. We have three positions: the Chairperson, Vice Chair, and Second Vice Chair. We can entertain nominations via written ballot or voice. It's up to the Planning Commission which they would prefer. I'm not sure how.
I don't have any preference.
Brittany, I'd like to move that the slate of officers as follows. Rich Marsh is our Chair, Vice Chairs Jim Coleman and Second Vice Chair Charlie Johnson.
I'd second that.
Are there any other nominations for officers? All right, we'll close the nominations. Do you need a roll call vote on those? Rich Marsh for Chairperson, Jim Coleman Vice Chairperson, and Second Chair Charlie Johnson?
Yeah, we won't have to do roll call since nobody zoomed in.
Okay.
We just need to make a motion to accept the...
Just an affirmative motion to that fact?
So there was a motion and second. So do you need a roll call then? Vote on that or no?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry.
Yes.
Yes, I meant my teleconference thing. Sorry. Yes, Rich?
Aye.
Ron?
Aye.
Travis?
Aye.
Kathy?
Aye.
Sandy?
Aye.
Motion carries. Well, thanks for nominating me for being the Chair again for another year. I appreciate it.
You do a good job.
Here we go. Well, second item on the agenda today is the approval of the June 22nd, 2020 minutes. Are there any corrections, changes to the minutes?
I move for approval.
Second.
Motion and second for the discussion for approval. Seeing none, so because Jim is not on, we can do normal vote, correct?
Yes.
All right. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is approval of the agenda. Today, we have consent agenda items three through... Correction, four through 15 and then normal agenda items 16 through 22 followed by our standard follow-up items at the end of the agenda. Are there any changes to the agenda today that anyone would like to make? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion for approval.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and second for approval for the discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, no. Motion carries. Brings us to today's consent agenda. Brittany?
Good morning, Commissioners. Again, Brittany Molitor, Planning Director. The following items have been placed on the consent agenda for action to be taken on all items in accordance with staff's recommendation by a single vote. Any item may be removed from the consent agenda by any Planning Commissioner, Staff member, or Audience member for separate consideration. The findings of this Planning Commission are recommendations to the Pennington County Board of Commissioners who will make the final decision. Item number four is Conditional Use Permit Review, CU 9952, for Aaron Polmidge to review a single wide mobile home as a caretaker's residence for an existing business in the general commercial district. And staff is recommending to end Conditional Use Permit, CU 9952, as it is no longer needed. Item number five is Conditional Use Permit Review, CU 1741, for Polmidge, Aaron, to review an existing structure, a restaurant, to be used as a single-family residence in a general commercial district. And staff is recommending to end Conditional Use Permit, CU 1741, as it is no longer needed. Item number six is Conditional Use Permit Review, CU 0531, for Dale and Kathy Warmstead, to review a second residence to be used as a caretaker's residence in a general agriculture district. Staff recommends to end Conditional Use Permit, CU 0531, as it is no longer needed. Item number seven is Conditional Use Permit Review, CU 1809, for Scott and Christine Verison, to review a recreational vehicle to be used as a temporary living quarters while building a single-family residence in a limited agriculture district. And staff recommends approval of the extension of Conditional Use Permit, CU 1809, with conditions. Item number eight is Conditional Use Permit Review, CU 1837, for Glenn and Debbie Lepp, to review a store and fiber mill in a general agriculture district. Staff recommends to continue the review of Conditional Use Permit, CU 1837, to the July 27th, 2020 Planning Commission meeting. Item number nine is Conditional Use Permit Review, CU 1919, for Dale and Sarah Gadbo, to review a secondary structure prior to a primary residence in a general agriculture district. Staff recommends approval of the extension of Conditional Use Permit, CU 1919, with conditions. Item number 10 is Conditional Use Permit Review, CU 1920, for Cody Russ Butler and Jeannie Marr as the agent, to review an existing residence to be used as a vacation home rental in a general agriculture district. Staff recommends approval of the extension of Conditional Use Permit, CU 1920, with conditions. Item number 11 is Conditional Use Permit, CU 2012, for Michael and Morella Anderson, to allow an existing living quarters to be used as a guest house in a low-density residential district. And staff recommends approval of Conditional Use Permit, CU 2012, with conditions. Item number 12 is Conditional Use Permit, CU 2013, for Richard Radetsky, to allow a single-wide mobile home to be used as a permanent single-family residence in a suburban residential district. And staff recommends approval of Conditional Use Permit, CU 2013, with conditions. Item number 13 is Conditional Use Permit, CU 2014, for John and Emily Rowe, to allow an existing single-family residence to be used as a bed and breakfast in a limited agriculture district. Staff recommends approval of Conditional Use Permit, CU 2014, with conditions. Item number 14 is Conditional Use Permit, CU 2015, for Greg Helgerson, to allow a single-wide mobile home to be used as a single-family residence in a limited agriculture district. Staff recommends approval of Conditional Use Permit, CU 2015, with conditions. And finally, item 15 is Minor Plat, NPL 20-13, for Dick Compass, to combine lots to create Lot 1R of Chase Elkhorn subdivision. And staff is recommending approval of Minor Plat, NPL 20-13, with conditions.
Thank you. Are there any items that the staff wishes to pull from the agenda?
No.
Are there any items that the membership wishes to pull from the agenda?
Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead.
I'd like to pull number nine, just to ask a question.
Any other items to pull from today's consent agenda? Okay. For those folks in the audience, we... The consent agenda consists of items that will all be voted on with one vote. They will not be split up into separate items. And just for clarification sake, Melody Berkland, which item, ma'am?
Do you know what item that was on the agenda? It's 12.
Item number 12? Okay, so I will pull that from the consent agenda then, so that can be discussed. So I have items on the consent agenda, items four through eight, 10 and 11, and 13 through 15, polling items number nine and number 12. Are there any other items? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion for approval of the consent agenda.
Move to approve, four through eight, 10 through 11, and 13 through 15.
Second. Motion and second for the discussion on those items. Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries. That brings us to item number nine.
Morning Commissioners, Jason Thinnison, County Planner. Hand me a question.
My question really is about the driveway because it appears that... I guess I'm wondering, under the recommendation, condition number one is that an approved approach permit be obtained from Martin Ranch Trail Road District prior to the installation of a driveway. But since this structure exists, isn't there already a driveway?
Not really. There's more or less a two-track road or a two-track trail going to it right now, just for construction purposes. He's planning to put a single-family residence on that property as well.
Okay.
At the time that he gets his building permit, we'll require that.
Okay, so is there more construction involved when he turns the two-track into a real driveway? I mean, is there...
Yes, if that road, which I suspect is going to exceed 10,000 square feet of construction work, so he'll need a stormwater permit for that as well.
I see. Okay, very good. Thank you. I'll move approval.
Second. Motion and second for approval of item number nine. Further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries. Brings us to item 12. Yeah, Melody Berkland, if you could come up, please, when you get to the... State your name for the record and what your questions are on this item.
Hi, I'm Melody Berkland. Excuse me. And I live right next door to the property. I've been there since 1981 and when we bought the home, we were told that the three trailer houses next to us, if something ever happened to them, they moved out. Nothing would be moved back in because it was supposed to be a permanent residential and not a trailer lot. And we've had rentals there for the whole time. And now this trailer lot, it's new ownership. The trailer's been moved out and now they're trying to move... I just would like a permanent... Like to know what the conditions are because the rentals have not been good.
I'm sorry, what hasn't been good?
The rentals next door. I've had my cars keyed with things and things stolen and it's just been a mess. So I'm just wondering what the conditions are. That's my concern.
So I have a question for you. Who told you back in the early 80s that this was going to be this way?
Our Realtor.
Okay. So is there any planning stipulations that I guess I would not be aware of? It sounds like there's been a mobile home there this entire time then?
Correct.
Okay. All right.
Thank you.
Further questions? Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead.
I have a question. Ma'am, my question is, is your issue with the fact that it's a mobile home or with the fact that it's being rented out?
That there being rentals.
I see. Okay.
Yes, if it would be a permanent residence, I would have no problem with it.
I know, but if it were a permanent residence, it could still be rented out.
Okay, now I guess you can. When we moved in there, we couldn't, so...
And had to be owner occupied?
Our home did next door. We were not allowed to rent out.
Thank you.
Ma'am, do you... Sorry to keep asking the questions. Do you have covenants that require that there's no rentals?
No.
Okay.
No.
So we, as a board, don't really control whether things can be rented out or not rented out. Typically, those are private covenants that, you know, go along with the property or the subdivision, et cetera, et cetera.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
I think that that answers my questions. Thanks.
Thank you.
Brittany, who's the person assigned to this one? Could you come up for a second? So has it been made clear to you whether or not this is intended to be used for a rental once it's installed from the owner?
No, it hasn't.
Has... Short of what we heard here today, has the county received any written complaints or anything along those lines with this property?
No.
Okay. Further questions on this item? With that, staff recommends approval of Conditional Use Permit, 2013, with eight conditions. Is there a motion?
I'll move approval. And I just want to say that, you know, these things are always so unfortunate when we hear reports like this and, you know, we really don't have any tools in our toolbox to... Control or govern how rental properties are managed or how renters behave. But I would really encourage you, ma'am, next time there's issues like this that, you know, that are obviously not right, that you do file some sort of a complaint so that it's on record and that there can be... It would help in terms of taking some action. But I think right now, they meet all the requirements that our ordinance requires so that... Anyway, I'll move to approve, but...
Mr. Chairman?
There's a motion for approval. Is there a second? Second.
I just want to...
Further discussion?
Yeah, my discussion would be, in a situation like this, if you want to save the integrity of your neighborhood, you get the neighbors together and you put some covenances together and those covenances would prohibit the use of rentals because the covenances would have some teeth, like Kathy said, we don't have any authority here to say if it can be rented out or if it can't be rented out. So I would highly suggest, if you don't have covenances, to look at it and generate some covenances that would protect your neighborhood and the integrity going into the future.
Further discussion on the item?
I think that the Speaker had... Did you want to say one something? I saw you raise your hand a little.
I was just going to say that I have never did anything, but the cops have been there I can't tell you how many times for these renters. I know this is new ownership, so I'm hoping it will be better.
Uh huh. So, ma'am, did you call the police or did the...
I did not, but the other neighbors have.
I see. Okay, all right.
Further discussion on the item? Anybody else in the audience wish to speak on this item? Come on up, sir, if you would.
Did you speak to the new owner about your concerns? I would suggest doing that too, just to give him a heads up that in the past, there's been a lot of trouble. You've had to report it and you shouldn't want to go through all that again.
Thank you, sir. Go ahead.
Cheryl Hoffman, State's Attorney's Office. I just want to point out that we're focusing on the issue of the rental when in fact, as Commissioner Johnson pointed out, whether it's a stick build or a mobile home, the property owner may rent that property. The real question is whether the placement of a mobile home under the Conditional Use Permit is appropriate.
Further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries. Brings us to item 15. Thank you.
Morning Commissioners, Jason Thinnison, County Planner. Agenda item 16 is Rezone 20-03. The applicant is Richard Sturkle. He is in the audience. If you have any questions for him, he's requested to rezone approximately 10 acres from Limited Agriculture District to Suburban Residential District. He's doing this because he's currently working through the city of Rapid City to subdivide the subject property in order to create eight residential lots. As the property sits today, it is currently zoned, Limited Agriculture District. There is special flood hazard area on the property. There's no structures on the subject property, no existing utilities, but it is within the three-mile plating jurisdiction of the city of Rapid City. Current zoning within one mile or within one-half mile consists of General Agriculture District, Limited Agriculture District, Low Density Residential, Suburban Residential, and Planned Unit Development Districts. Future land use within the area consists of Low Density or Suburban Residential Districts. As the request was sent over to... Through interdepartmental review, no concerns were received. So as you can see from the maps on your screen, there are currently several suburban residential district properties located within one-half mile of the subject property. Future land use, as of the date of the application, identifies suburban residential district as a primary zoning district within one-half mile of the subject property. Therefore, the request to rezone appears to be in harmony with current and future land use zoning and staff is recommending approval.
Thank you. Are there questions for staff?
Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead, Kathy.
You know, my... Two things really, but my main thing... My main question is that it's my understanding that there's been a Green Valley sanitary district formed in that neighborhood and I was just wondering if this... If these lots will be connected to that district, the sanitary district? Do you know anything about that?
No, that's a work in progress through the city. I don't know if they've extended their services to that area yet or not.
Okay.
Let's hold on, sir. We'll go through the comments from staff and then I'll... We'll bring you up. Thanks.
Okay. And then the last thing, this is just a typo that might want to be corrected. Under existing conditions, number C, it says Axos off of Highway 40. That should be 40.
That's correct, yep. I noticed that too. It needs to be corrected. So actually off Green Valley Drive.
Okay, thank you.
Further questions from staff? Okay. All right. Now, please come forward, sir, if you have... Yes, please.
My name is Rich Sturkle. Thank you for letting me address all of you. I appreciate that very much. The only reason I really got into this was Mr. Jason, who is the engineer for the new sewer. And I have been working together for quite a while to put a sewer in there at the same... If you let me, rezoning and all that, is the same time we develop and then Rapid City Water is to our... I don't know, if you're Rapid Valley Water, which is controlled by the city. And I've talked to both of them and without that, I... Without the sewer, I wouldn't do it because you guys wouldn't give me permission to put septic systems in there anyway. So I have to work in conjunction with them and right now, they're saying 2021 as sort of the target was this year, but with the virus, everything got all goofed up and so they're going to probably push it into next year. But I hope to be part of that development. And the other thing is, is that I was at the board meeting the other night, the water board meeting, and I have to say that one of the things in here that you put was about my lot size and I have to have one-acre lots there. I can't have half... It says half acre, but it's really going to be eight-acre lots, so it's not going to be any half acre. So it'll be pretty darn good-sized lots for the folks out there and I plan to asphalt it and bring it up to high standard because I'd love to have a really nice place there in Rapid Valley with nothing but stick-built homes and that and it has a beautiful view of Black Elk, I might add. But anyway, that's where I'm at. Any other question I can answer for you?
Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead, Sandy.
What will you be asphalting?
The road through the property.
Oh, okay.
So that all the residents have that, yeah.
Okay, I just wanted to be sure I understood.
All of that is to the standards we sent out for a comment and everything. They all told me that, you know, to do those things, you have to meet these standards. So I'm trying to work closely with all these guys to do the right thing and to come up with something really nice there, so.
Further questions for the applicant?
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, Ron.
Move to approve.
We have one speaker request form on this item that I'd like to go through first, if you're okay with that.
Yep.
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, sir.
Okay, thank you, guys. I appreciate it.
I have a speaker request form here from Vic and Loretta Jangala. Can I get that right? Please.
Jangula?
Jangula, thank you.
Thank you. Our only concern is, and it's not really concern at this point, we're right adjacent to that property and we have a very nice modular and it's... We've got a beautiful yard and it's a nice location and we're just concerned, we want to make sure that there's not going to be like any single-family manufactured, single-wide mobile homes in there or any huge two-story buildings that's going to obstruct the view. And then basically, what's the average square footage of these homes going to be?
I don't know if we can answer all of those questions here today.
Well, those are just... Those are just our questions or concerns, so...
So the question today is whether or not it should be rezoned from General Agricultural to Suburban Residential District. Can you speak to lot size requirements on suburban residential?
Our lot is just a hair over one acre.
Yeah, I was going to ask Jason behind you.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I was going to have him mention that to you. And then I believe the landowner just indicated that he was going to plat eight one-acre lots. So hopefully that answers some of your questions, but the buildings and that kind of stuff, we won't be able to answer today. Go ahead.
So the minimum lot size for suburban residential district is 6,500 square feet.
So well under an acre.
Right.
Okay. And he's indicating that he's going to propose to put in one-acre lots. So that's the information we have today on the rezone.
Thank you.
Any further questions for the board or anything?
Those are just our... Those were three points that we were concerned about.
Okay.
Apparently, some of those you can't answer at this point, so...
I don't... We won't be able to tell you how tall the structures are, no.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, Ron.
I believe you stated that those are going to be stick-built homes and I'm assuming that if somebody's going to subdivide and want to get eight lots, that they're going to want to put structures in there that would be in harmony with the existing neighborhood to promote sales of the property.
Further questions on this item? Seeing none, staff has recommended approval of Rezone 20-03. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and second for approval for their discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no.
Thank you.
Motion carries. That's a first.
It is a first.
Good morning, Commissioners. Christina Proetti, County Planner. Item 17 is Layout Plan 20-16. On June 10th, 2020, the applicants, James and Marilyn Dean, requested to reconfigure lot lines for the subject properties to create Lot A, Lot B, Lot C of GM Dean subdivisions and Tract 5R of Storm Hill subdivisions. So proposed Lot A will have approximately three acres. Proposed Lot B will have approximately 6.76 acres. And proposed Lot C will have approximately three acres. Proposed Tract 5R will have approximately 6.76 acres. The subject properties are currently zoned as Low Density Residential. There's no special flood hazard area on the subject properties. The proposed lots, Lot A, Lot B, and Lot C of GM Dean subdivision are combined approximately 10 acres. A rezone or lot size variance would be required and also a comprehensive plan amendment. On June 10th, 2020, the applicants, James and Marilyn Dean, did apply for a rezone request. That's Rezone 20-04, to change zoning from General Agriculture District to Low Density District to Low Density Residential District. Also, on June tenth, twenty twenty, the applicants did apply for a comprehensive plan amendment as well, twenty dash zero three, to change the future land use from General Agriculture District to Low Density Residential District. These rezone and comp plan amendments will be heard at this same meeting, and it is item number eighteen. Tract Five R of Storm Hill subdivision is proposed to be approximately six point seven six acres. All proposed lots are able to gain access from Palmer Gulch Road, and staff has routed this through interdepartmental review. There are no items of concern for these properties. Um, staff recommends to approve it with conditions.
Thank you. Are there any questions for staff on this item?
You know, Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead Cathy.
You know, just as a point of curiosity, you know, that Palmer Gulch Road ends at the railroad track, so shortly there over, but it doesn't, it doesn't really continue all the way over to the Old Hill City Road. So it's, it's kind of a dead end, really. But how many houses are along that road? Do you know address points through the whole length of it? So that, I guess what I'm trying to get a sense of is that, you know, how many houses, address points are being developed on that kind of a dead end road?
Um, I actually don't know that answer.
Okay.
I don't know the answer to that.
I mean, I just, it'd be interesting to find out, but I, I'm not going to prevent this from happening today, but I think that'd be interesting.
Mr. Chair.
Just to understand.
Go ahead Ron.
It's really common in that area. What you have is just a, an assemblage of a lot of mineral surveys and mineral surveys fifteen hundred feet by three hundred feet or ten point three-three acres. And, and I knew, and as we progressed on Hill City and housing shortage, you're going to see these ten acre mineral surveys being subdivided, either two, three lots. But I know that area and I don't see anything real adverse with this particular request.
Okay. Thank you. Further questions? Seeing none. Staff's recommending approval of layout plat, um, LPL twenty dash sixteen with, let me see, seven. With seven conditions? Is that correct?
Yes, seven conditions.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and second. Further discussion on this item? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, no. Motion carries. Brings us to item eighteen.
Okay. Item eighteen is rezone and comprehensive amendment plan, rezone twenty dash zero four and comprehensive plan amendment twenty dash zero three. This is for the land we just spoke about for the layout plan. Just kind of restate some things. June tenth, twenty twenty, the applicants, James and Marilyn Dean, applied for a quest to rezon approximately ten acres from General Agriculture District to Low Density Residential District. The applicants are also requesting to amend the Pennington County Comprehensive Plan to change the future land use from General Agriculture District to Low Density Residential District. This is, this request is in harmony with the future land use plan. Uh, like I stated earlier, they are requesting to replat the land as well. That's why this came about. Um, let's see. Current zoning within one mile of the subject property, we have General Agriculture District, Low Density Residential District, and Limited Agriculture District. Surrounding future land use zoning within one mile of the subject property, we have public land, P U D sensitive, and Low Density Residential District. Um, staff has routed this through interdepartmental review, and there are no other items of concern for this property. Staff does recommend approval of rezon twenty dash zero four and comprehensive plan amendment twenty dash zero three with one condition, I believe.
Thank you. Are there, did you say with one condition?
Nope. I lied. Zero conditions.
Thank you.
Sorry.
You had me confused. Is there questions for staff on this item? Okay. Any questions from the audience on this item? Seeing none. Staff recommends approval of rezone twenty dash zero four and, and comprehensive plan amendment twenty dash zero three. Is there a motion?
Move to proof.
Second.
Motion and second. Further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, no. Motion carries. Brings us to item nineteen.
Good morning Commissioners. Item nineteen is Layout Plan LPL twenty dash fourteen. The applicant Gordon Howie and Grandview Land LLC, Dan Lewis, is requesting to create seven lots in the Cedar Gulch Number Two subdivision. The proposed lots are in response to a court order, C I V sixteen dash zero zero one one four zero. As the property stands today, it is zoned to planned unit development. The planned unit development is zero five dash eighteen, and it was approved by the Board of Commissioners on January third, two thousand and six, and again on January sixteenth, two thousand and seven. It consists of one hundred and twenty-one point one-one acres. It is currently vacant of any structures, and there is some special flood hazard area on the subject property, which is a Zone A designation. Um, they are proposing, um, seven lots, one of which consists of about six point two acres. Access is off of Bradsky Road or Galloway Drive. It is in the Cedar Gulch Number Two Road District. Um, there is water and sewer service in this development. If you notice that square in the middle, probably to the right of that thirty-two, there is a lagoon system. Majority of those lots are already connected to that lagoon system. And there are two lots, I believe, two or three lots, that the infrastructure is not currently in. Um, that would be conditioned, um, that that infrastructure is put in prior to the issuance of any building permits. Um, this was routed through the interdepartmental review. Um, there was a couple of items of concern. Um, there is Canada this along the property, so the county natural resources is asking for a nuptious weed plan. Um, there is some concern that there, they would be increasing the number of lots on a dead end, um, road. Staff did speak to, um, the engineer from Long Branch Civil Engineering. He is in the audience. And we did, um, talk about putting some restrictions if, uh, the planning commission and board of commissioners do approve this plat, uh, that, that second means of ingress and egress would be developed prior to issuance of any building permits, but allowing this plat to go through as a response to the court order to allow those lots to be transferred and deeded. Um, so staff is actually recommending denial of layout plat, PL twenty dash fourteen, as the proposed subdivision would further increase density on a dead end road system with only one means of vehicular ingress and egress. However, if the planning commission chooses to approve this layout plat, staff does recommend eight conditions.
Thank you. Are there questions for staff on this item? I'll go ahead and start, I guess. So you have already discussed, what was in my mind the main question on this, is we have this court order that says that we should, uh, subdivide and plant these lots off. To my knowledge, uh, most, most if not all of the items on Bradsky Road for expansion in the past have been denied due to the over plating of that area without the secondary ingress and egress. And so does, if we were to have this move forward and, and allow the transfer of these lots, does that satisfy the conditions of the court order?
So the court order does require, um, some of the transfer of the property. Um, how the property is laid out right now, you couldn't have just one piece of property because it's not contiguous. Uh, so that was a question that, um, the state's attorney's office and I had spoken about. Um, so it looks like there would be three lots, um, because of the way that it's configured, that would have to be transferred as part of the land. I did speak with the engineer and he had indicated that instead of coming back and replating again, um, for the four more lots, um, that they just wanted to get the plat done, whether it be three or seven. So that was essentially the.
My next, oh, sorry, go ahead.
Michelle Hoffman, State's Attorney's Office. I'm a, um, I have my own questions. Within our discussion, my thought with regard to court orders, and I have not seen the court order, is that the court order only requires transfer of the property. It does not require further subdivision of the lots. I do know in transferring the property, there might need to be, um, a further plating, but I don't know if the court order itself requires a subdivision of the seven lots.
Oh, sorry.
I was just handed the court order, so I'm going to take a look at it.
Go ahead.
Yeah, my name is Kale Magnaville. I'm a Long Branch Civil Engineering. I represent the applicant in this issue. Yeah, the court order requires transfer of the property. Since it's less than forty acres, it can't be transferred by legal description. Really plating it is the only process to try and do a, get a more T D on this property. So that's the purpose of the plating.
So, I'll go ahead.
The, uh, obviously the staff's come forward with a recommendation to put a deed restriction on there to not allow any development of the property. The owner is, has no issue with that. What he really wants to achieve is getting the land transferred, um, to himself, you know, in performance with the court order, not necessarily building the buildings on it. So really, the, the idea is to get the lots platted, get them transferred, and then they can start working on the issue of how to get secondary access and the sewer routed for the lots, one to a block three and lot two a block two.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead Ron.
If we were to approve this and then down the road, somebody did want to build on those and secondary access is a concern, would that be addressed, Brittany, when they go for the building permit?
And I get, I have a, I'm going to piggyback onto that question. So specifically, what is the mechanism that's used for the deed restriction, uh, not allowing development of those lots until, um, until the secondary access is taken care of?
So we have had another lot, um, that was part of a court order that was along Bradsky Road. Um, they did do a deed restriction that it was only allowed for agricultural use until such time that vehicular means of ingress and egress was established. Um, there are condition, there is a condition, um, of the plat, uh, that they would have to file that deed restriction at the same time that the plat is filed, that those lots could not, um, be utilized for residential, building permits could not be issued, um, for residences until that second means of vehicular ingress and egress. In addition, they would need a variance to the subdivision regulations to allow, um, additional lots on a dead end road because there is a maximum of forty on a dead end road. So, um, staff did put that in. Also, as a condition, um, that to condition that variance, that there wouldn't be any, uh, building permits issued on those lots under that variance.
Which, which number is that?
Um, number one and number four.
Okay.
So the quitclaim deed would have the restriction on it?
There would be a deed restriction that would be found through the title search. I think we've done other deed restrictions that are similar. Um, that, like I said, there was another, um.
Yeah, but the verbiage would be on the quitclaim deed that would be recorded.
It would be. Yeah. Well, and that's how that was done on the other one, um, that they could not, um, there was a deed restriction that did not allow anything.
I understand. I was just looking at the method by which it would get recorded.
Right. It would just be a deed restriction that would be associated with that lot.
On the quitclaim deed.
Well, if it's a quitclaim deed or a, a whatever deed.
No. Also, quitclaim deed basically just says you have no.
I, I understand that. That's why I was wondering.
The, the, the actual deed restriction gets filed and it's linked to every one of those lots. So when you go to purchase the lot and you do your.
Right.
Title.
Your title work, it shows up as the deed restriction. So.
I, I understand.
They don't put those on the quitclaim deeds themselves.
Yeah. And that's why I was curious as to what method would be used. Okay. Thank you.
I have a question. So let's say we deny this. In my mind, that puts this, uh, court order and, and this item in limbo without really a, a path forward. Or how, how does that work if we, if there's a decree or, I mean, are we, are we just trying to make sure that the court order gets satisfied? Uh, and if we say no, we're not doing this, then what?
Michelle Hoffman, State's Attorney's Office. I think there are a lot of unanswered questions here. Uh, the, the litigation involved Gordon Howie and Constance Howie against Bone Ranch Land Company LLC and Grandview Land LLC. Um, without being familiar with the proceedings, I don't know whether this judgment was a result of a negotiation between the parties. Um, findings and, and the court entered apparently findings affecting conclusions of law, which I do not have. I just have the judgment in order. So the judgment does indicate that the, um, that the defendant shall cooperate with the plaintiffs in plating the property and transferring the property. But again, I don't know that much about the proceedings. I think the parties could go back in and seek a modification of the judgment. I'm just questioning whether this plating process that's included in this judgment was part of the negotiation of the parties. And I question whether a court can even issue a judgment that's contrary to the requirements of our ordinance. And I, I'm pretty sure that Judge Matt Brown was probably completely unaware of the issues surrounding Bradsky Bridge, the secondary access, the limitation in terms of, um, density. And my concern initially, when I spoke with, I don't know, the planning director, was exactly that. If we all can recall, not too long ago, we had an issue where property was purchased, it had been previously platted, and it put the planning commission board in a very difficult situation because of the facts of that case of increasing the density in, in an area where it shouldn't happen until that secondary access. So my theory is someone buys one of these lots unaware of the restriction, and then that puts the planning department in a position of saying, sorry, you bought that lot, but we're not approving the building permit. So I think there are a lot of unanswered questions here. Um, I think we can track down the answers, but those are just my concerns.
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead Travis.
Michelle, if we continue this to the next meeting, just so you could ask those questions, would that give you enough time to get an answer? So we have, so he understands, so the judge understands, and so we can kind of get a better idea?
Uh, I wouldn't reach out to the judge. I'd probably reach out to the parties to determine, um, you know, whether this was a negotiation. And the other thing is too, is there some way that we, because it's under forty acres, it creates a, a certain, you know, certain issues in terms of transferring the property. But there might be some other way of transferring this property without further subdividing. I don't know. But certainly it's something we could look into. I, I'm just guessing here. I'm guessing this judgment came down to the simple matter of transferring some property as a result of this litigation. Does not necessarily require subdivision. Which would ultimately be your decision, but those are my concerns. But I would be happy to try and find those answers for you.
Thank you.
I got a question, um, for, for you. If you'd come back up, please. So why not just make, if, if the intent is just to transfer these lots from one party to the next, why not, why not make them?
Three lots.
Yeah, two lots or three lots.
Yeah, I can, I'd love to lead you through that conversation. So the, when you plat something in the county.
Yep.
Okay. So June tenth, we'd make this submittal. It's going to go to Planning Commission County Board. Then we're going to submit layout, well, layout. Then we're going to get submit pre-lim, which is going to go to the Planning Commission County Board. Then we're going to submit final, which is going to go to Planning Commission County Board. And if it goes smoothly and there are no issues, and then you submit the final plat and you get to my lar, you're five months into this. So every time you bring a plat forward, you better, I tell all my clients, if it's, if there's any issues, it's eight months to get it approved. If there's no issues, you're five months before you get a my lar. So it's a timing issue. Those are the final configuration of the lots. So my guess was that we ought to just jump right to the final configuration so it doesn't take another six months to come back. Once the secondary access gets installed and the sewer's provided to those lots that were registered to the staff report, then we're ready to transfer these. Now, I guess I've been doing this for about twenty-five years now. I don't know how we're going to transfer that property without plating it. Um, if we were in Custer County, we could probably do it with a legal description. If we were in Custer County, we could probably do it with a legal description, but we're not. So, and as far as alternate ways to transfer this property without going through the plating process, I'll be waiting anxiously to hear how that, how that works out.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, Ron.
Seems like the problem we're having is that secondary access. And with that being said, items, uh, conditions one and four, I really think address that purely clearly. Seven lots, you can't build on them until you get secondary access. To me, this is not that hard to figure out.
Couldn't agree with you more.
Mr. Chair. Go ahead, Kathy.
Just as a point of curiosity, not that it really has a bearing on this, but can you, can you get a larger map and you can kind of show us the road system out there? And what roads, where the secondary access would go, and, or at least the way it's designed now? Or can you describe it, how that could be? Would that one work?
Yeah, really, the only road that's coming in is Bradsky.
Yes, and I think that the, the plans that were submitted, sorry, the plans that were submitted, um, came across Backcountry Trail here to Airport Road. And those have been submitted, it just has not been constructed. So where, how far south does Bradsky Road go? Uh, it goes pretty close. But that's the problem. Bradsky Road is the dead-end road. Correct.
Yes.
Okay.
And, Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead, Travis.
Can you also point out where the bridge is? Because I think that was the reason that it's a dead, it's, it's restricted, because we've always worried about that bridge that's on there, right?
Correct.
Brittany, and where, can you point out that bridge so someone knows where that egress bridge is?
I will get that up here for you.
I think there's a section line right by there, too. Yeah, there it is.
So, let's see. So, this is the area in question that's looking to plat, and this is where the bridge is. It's pretty much near the intersection of Highway 44. This was the one, and you can see this is where the temporary, when the county highway was reconstructing that bridge.
And that's always been the concern out in that area, if a bridge went out, and you needed to get people out.
Yeah, I see. Okay, all right, well, that's, I get the sense of it. Thank you.
So, the plans have been submitted, and they're being reviewed? Is there a timeframe of the proposed construction?
Those plans were submitted back in 2006, I believe, as part of the requirements for the PUD to be approved. If you look, I think it's in the staff report as, I think it was item number one of the conditions of the PUD, the 0508, that prior to any plating, the second means of ingress, egress is engineered, that prior to the issuance of the seventh building permit, the second means of ingress, egress be constructed to allow construction vehicles access to the development, that prior to issuance of the 31st building permit, the second means of ingress, egress be constructed to ordinance 14 standards, and that prior to issuance of the 71st building permit, the second means of ingress, egress be paved. So some hit, this subdivision has quite a bit of history, and Mr. Magnaville could probably speak more to it. But this piece of property right here originally was intended to be several more lots and to be all platted out, hence the reason for the water system and the lagoon system that was installed for the infrastructure to serve that. It's just that that second means of ingress and egress has not been constructed. There was a couple ways that they could do. Some of it is topography issues, some of it is cost. So that's been basically the holdup over time for anything along this Bradsky Road for the development of that PUD.
Michelle Hoffman, State's Attorney. And Ms. Malter may be able to provide further details, but I think it was a few years ago when building permits were denied on a property that had been previously, many years ago, subdivided, that the denial of that building permit was appealed and was the subject of, I think, multiple hearings. And one of the problems was, was, to my understanding, and Ms. Malter may have further information, is that at the time those properties were subdivided, the intent was that a secondary access point be created, but because of some confusion at the time of that plating process, the proper language was not included. And so ultimately, on appeal, those building permits were approved despite the significant concern of the lack of a secondary ingress, egress. So now we're here, a couple years later, same issue, and I think the same concerns.
Michelle, would you say the, the, uh, conditions one and four might address that from happening with this property if it was to go forward?
I'm seeing none.
Because with, with this mechanism, I really can't see how anybody could get a building permit.
You would hope not. I mean, assuming proper title search and proper, prior to closing, the purchaser would be aware of the restriction, building restriction on the deed. But I just think it's something, something that just needs close attention, that we need to be aware of, you know, it, it should you decide to approve this platting, this platting.
Yeah.
But I don't think this plat is forced, per se, by this judgment. There is this judgment. It discusses the parties working together, plating and transferring this property. But I don't believe that the judge, at the time he issued this, was aware of the plating restrictions and ultimately plating and those types of decisions are the jurisdiction of this body. So I'm, I'm not concerned with the compliance, complying with this judgment. That's more of a problem of the parties in terms of, well, if we want to approve the plat, how, how are they, are they gonna go back in and modify the judgment so that in some other manner, the property may be transferred? But I don't think in this, I mean, in this instance, plating is your jurisdiction.
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
Can I make a motion?
Go ahead.
Um, I move that we continue this to another meeting.
Which one?
Which meeting?
Yes.
Um, if the July 28th meeting works, then that would be the date. Or July, what?
27th.
27th.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Motion and second, further discussion to continue this item to the July 27th meeting.
Mr. Chair, in that timeframe, what would we, what additional information would we be looking for so that we can make a decision on the 27th?
Uh, probably one of my first steps would be to reach out to the parties, determine the facts and circumstances underlying this judgment was, was set on that what was seeking to be accomplished. I'm assuming there's some sort of monetary value, the, you know, money, money was involved, and so this property was transferred. Also looking into whether there's some other way to transfer the property, I don't know, without further subdividing the lots, and that will probably lead to further questions.
Will that be enough time, Michelle, for you to do that?
I believe so. I'll take this opportunity to introduce Colin McNeese. I don't know if you're all aware, I am leaving the Pennington County State's Attorney's Office. I've accepted a position with the United States Attorney's Office, and their civil division. And Colin McNeese has been selected to, uh, take my place. So, it might be a wonderful project to get Mr. McNeese started on.
Well, welcome.
Well, okay.
Pleased to meet you guys. I'm excited to work with you.
Yeah, welcome.
Ron, did that answer your question on, on the item?
Yeah, yeah.
And my comment, I've seen the judicial deed, you know, recorded, so I don't know if that's, you know, possible. Judicial, judicial deeds bypass all of the requirements and just transfers it. I've only seen that once in 40 years, but.
You know, Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, Kathy.
You know, just as a kind of a little contrarian here, I, I'm not necessarily opposed to continuing it, but I don't know if I really can see a reason. And because it strikes me as that that legal document, that's not really what we're basing this on. I mean, I think that's kind of an independent deal, and we are just approving this layout plat based on what, what we see, and irrespective of the, of the judgment, it seems like this could move forward. And I, I mean, I'm sure there's been, you know, horror stories where there's been a mix-up and something, some restriction, a deed restriction didn't get caught up in the process. But it strikes me that, that our conditions one and four, certainly, if they work, like they're designed to work, and you have to assume that the process is gonna work, you know, should take care of this. And so I, I'm just not sure that I see a need to continue it.
I agree.
Further discussion?
I mean, I, I'd make an amended or a substitute motion to approve it as is with the conditions, uh, one through eight.
I'll second that.
Motion and second on substitute motion, further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, no?
No.
We have four ayes, one no. Substitute motion carries. Brings us to item 20.
Item 20 is layout plan LPL 20-15, creates lots one, two, and three of Track Lake subdivision. This board is familiar with this property. They were here earlier this year to create a RV park and store here at this location. It is located at the intersection of Highway 44 and 385. It is currently zoned highway service district. It consists of 14.98 acres. It does contain a convenience store and equipment shed. It does have a telecommunications tower and fuel pumps on this property. There is special flood hazard area. Access is taken off West Highway 44, and there is that conditional use permit that does allow a recreational vehicle park. How this property is being proposed to be planted, they want to create three lots. The lot one, the 7.38 acres, would consist of the RV recreational resort and the telecommunications tower. The other two lots, lots two and three, they are looking to develop those as residential lots, which would require that these lots be rezoned to a residential zoning district. The surrounding land uses in the area, there is low-density residential district, there is suburban residential district, and there are large lot and small lot residential uses in this area. Staff did route this through the interdepartmental review process. The only item of concern came up, there is some special flood hazard area on this property, and the South Dakota Department of Transportation has, let's see, approved a secondary approach. You can see it all the way to the top of that property. It would be a shared approach for those proposed lots two and three. Staff is recommending approval of this layout plat with conditions. So entertain any questions?
Does the subdivision of the, those other parcels still leave enough room for what they wanted to do on lot one?
It does, and the reason that that lot one is kind of a strange configuration is they did have to take into consideration those setbacks for that existing cell tower, that 1.1 distance. So that was one of the items that they had worked with Renner and Associates in creating that lot, so they can maintain those setbacks for that telecommunications tower.
Thank you. Further questions for staff on this item?
Maybe I'll ask Brittany. Brittany, are they gonna try to refurbish that little store that's there?
Yes, I did speak with the applicant's agent. They are in the process of a sale of that property. They do want to fix up that convenience store, and they want to reestablish a small convenience store and bar in that location. I believe the fuel pumps will still be utilized. They are reconfiguring the approach to that, so right now, there's two approaches. They're only going to, they're gonna close one and expand that existing one to the north. And then they're going to have the RV park there.
Will they sell fuel?
Yes, that, I believe that is the intent at this time. They do have, the fuel tanks are still installed, and I think they're in good condition from last.
I just know that, that little pond there, it's, I don't know, it just, I'd be concerned with the underground fuel tanks.
Yeah, and that area is flood plain. Those underground fuel tanks are actually governed by the state of South Dakota. Underground storage tanks can only be in the ground, I believe, 20 years max, and they are permitted through that agency.
Thank you.
Further questions on this item? Seeing none. Staff recommends approval of layout plan LPL 20-15 with nine conditions. Is there a motion?
Move or rebuttal?
Second.
Motion and second, further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, no? Motion carries. Brings us to item 21.
So, item 21 is ordinance amendment OA 20-03 to amend section 309(c) six for yard building setback exceptions. The purpose of here is to clarify certain conditions pertaining to the use of lots and access points. In item six, its accessory building shall not be located in any required front yard in residential zoning districts less than one acre. Currently, how this reads is accessory building shall not be located in any required front yard. It makes it difficult on large lot and agricultural lots. I'll bring up an example of barns and sheds. They are essentially would have to get a variance to the zoning ordinance to allow that. I don't believe that that was the original intent of this. I believe the intent of it was to not allow, like, sheds and carports and things on small lots in higher-density residential districts. Let me see.
Makes sense. Questions for staff on this item? Any concerns with the language, verbiage? Seeing none, staff is recommending approval of ordinance amendment OA 20-03. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and second, further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, no? Motion carries. Brings us to item 22.
So, item 22 is ordinance amendment OA 20-04 to amend section 511 fees to replace and supersede the current section 511 fees of the Pennington County zoning ordinance. The purpose of this amendment was to update and alphabetize this section. The biggest changes in this section is there was some reconfiguration. It was clearer to read, it's alphabetized, you can find things. We did change how we calculate the building permit fees. They will be required to submit a bid if they have a licensed contractor. Our office is proposing to require licensing of contractors in the future, so that would allow the bid. If not, they would have to be determined by the International Code Council Building Valuation Data. That is something that's generated by the ICC yearly. It is a compilation of average cost of construction in the nation. Prior to that, it was somewhat arbitrary how those price per square foot was calculated. It was calling around, getting some bids, finding out what contractors were charging. Staff felt that this was a better, more defensible way of calculating building permit fees. If you do look at that ICC list, it would be under the group 5A. That's what most of the buildings and structures are in Pennington County. The only other item, oh, sorry, there's two items, actually, that the flood plain development permit fee went up to $125 from $75. There is quite a bit of review and requirements with the flood plain development permits by staff. And the onsite wastewater treatment system construction permit application went from 200. treatment system construction permit application went from two hundred and fifty dollars to two hundred and seventy-five dollars. Other than that, we disalphabetized, we removed the exceptions portion that is actually in that five oh six that was previously approved instead of being in five eleven fees. And then the penalties section did change. So entertain any questions?
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, Ron.
Brittany, when's the last time these fees have been updated?
I don't think they have in a very long time. I know our, our building permit fees have not changed in probably five years at least, I would say.
Yeah, it's, it's.
Just out of curiosity, how would we compare it to other counties? Are we, do we try to stay out of the market or?
Um, you know, I haven't looked at other areas. I have looked at the city. They have a different type of structure. When we were looking at construction costs, we had finished square footage at a hundred dollars a square foot, which is actually very cheap for most of the cost of construction here. So going by the International Code Council, even that, we're probably, that's probably still low in relation to what's actually the cost per square foot in this area. But we have to have a means and a standardized way to calculate that for our building permit fees. That zero zero four calculation, if you look at the, that ICC, it has to do with, that's a multiplier that they use based on our budget and the number of permits or the valuation of permits that we do. So we're at about that point four percent. That's where that number comes from.
What conditions would change at point zero zero four? I'm just not familiar with that number, so I was just curious.
Yeah, it just has to do with the, it's the building permit budget, like our department budget divided by the annual construction value. So when you get those building permit reports, that construction value that we have in the bottom, you know, usually every year we run anywhere from thirty to thirty-five million in construction value. That's what we calculate with our building permits. So that's where that number, where that number comes from.
Thank you.
Chair.
Go ahead, Kathy.
A couple of things, but regarding the calculation of costs, is there any concern about creating a situation where people come for a building permit and they don't have, if not proceeded far enough down the road to actually have the design button down so that they actually go get a bid or have a materials list? And, and so is there any concern that, and then at the end of the day, because of whatever, they may not get the building permit? So is there any concern that this would compel, you know, so too much expense and work upfront without a good outcome?
Well, there's two ways to determine it. So if you are, if you're, when you come to our office to get your building permit, typically one of, you know, it's either the homeowner that gets a building permit because they're a do-it-yourselfer and they're doing it, or their contractor is coming. It's a home builder or a contractor. So the contractor would already have that bid in place, especially if they're coming, they would have the plans in place. The do-it-yourselfer would use essentially that ICC valuation data information to submit that, because they wouldn't have, you know, a materials list. And in order to get a building permit in our office, you do have to have pretty much your plans buttoned down, because we require the site plans, floor plans, things like that. So they have to have a pretty good idea of what they're building irregardless of that at the time.
Okay, so very, very good. The other thing, and I did my best to try to compare that existing ordinance with this proposed one, but, so I may have made some mistakes here, but is, is the so-called park model homes, is that new to this, to the updated one? Or is that, I didn't see it in the old one, but tell me about that.
That is new. That is a trend that is going on in some of our RV parks and recreational areas, and even for that matter, on residential properties. So, and there was a, a Supreme Court decision regarding those. So that's part of the reason that was put in here and clarified.
But to date, they're not, if you, I mean, if you decide you're going to put one on your lot, you don't, you wouldn't have needed a building permit?
You do need a building permit based on that Supreme Court decision. What they consider is like temporary, is something that can be moved relatively quickly and moved from site to site. Typically, when park models are put on lots or RV sites, they're skirted, they're connected to water and sewer. So it's not something that they can just hook up quickly and pull out. That's how we look at like a temporary structure, more of an RV. So we were requiring building permits for the last couple of years for those park models.
Okay. Let me see, there's one other, one thing, another thing I wanted to ask you if I can just find it.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, Ron.
So Kathy, where our development is, I think we probably have eight park models on there. And it gets kind of tricky. When they first started moving them up, they didn't think, well, I don't need a building permit, because it's just, the thing's got a license plate, it's got tires. But we've learned through the process that you need to get a building permit, because these things are put on blocks and they're skirted. And when it's all said and done, you're increasing the market value, the utility. And so I totally agree with that.
Michelle Hoffman, State's Attorney's Office, to explain a little further with regard to Commissioner Ross' connect statement and the Supreme Court case. That Supreme Court case actually was a case dealing with equalization. And under the statutes dealing with taxation, the question becomes whether it's considered to be a permanent improvement to the land. And that was decided upon some of the factors that Commissioner Ross connect has stated. There may be occasions where they would be considered temporary and they're carried away, but the majority of these park models are being put in place, skirted, decked. They're not going anywhere. They're not being used as an RV, even though they're categorized as an RV. So they were even prior to this amendment, under that type of fact pattern, being required to get a building permit. So we're just clarifying further under five eleven.
My last question was that in the existing one, there's, you know, quite a section on notice of violation, how that process goes. And I don't see it in the new one. Is that notice, how that, how that is handled when there's a violation? Has, is that been moved somewhere else?
It is. We are actually updating section five fourteen, which is our violations section. Because what we found when we were working through all of these ordinances, we were saying the same thing over and over and over in every section. And it just didn't make sense to, to, to do that in every section. We just would refer it to one section.
I thought maybe that was the case. I just wanted to clarify.
Well, and you likely will not actually see anything with regard to, I'll take that back. Problem with the notice provisions that were placed in five eleven and other ordinances is almost suggests as if you could not be cited for an ordinance violation until we gave you three notices. There's nothing in state statute. And it's really becomes, nor is there anything that would compel us to require to give someone three notices before we take legal action. Quite frankly, in some cases, if it's a significant threat to health, safety, and welfare, the county can and should take immediate action. So I just, in discussion with the planning department, felt that however they decide to notice these violations really should be a policy decision and not something required under our ordinance. So the only reference to notice you will see in five fourteen that's coming to you shortly is that every day, we consider every day that your property's non-compliance to be in violation. We made it very clear that we're not going to stack, you, you're going to get a first notice. You're in violation, we can cite you immediately, but we're not going to consider it to be a repeat violation until in fact you are notified. So other than that, the notice provisions will be eliminated.
Mr. Chair, one more question for me.
Go ahead, Ron.
On the energy system, Brittany, the applications is the flat one thousand?
Yes.
So there's one on the planning stages. I think it's going to be on fifteen hundred acres. So it's going to be fairly large solar. So does the scale have any variation on what the fee's going to be? Or could it be on a two-acre site and the same fee?
The utility scale is going to be the thousand dollars, because right now that, that's actually a conditional use permit. Other conditional use permits are three hundred dollars. So this is a thousand dollars for the utility scale. That's what was put in place when that solar and wind energy ordinance was put into place. That was the cost that was approved.
My one question on the building permit under the commercial and industrial buildings or structures. One A says, construction costs will be determined by bid, bill of sale, or materials list. And my concern is that if they just submitted materials list, it's about probably forty percent of the cost. So if we use the word or there, if that should be changed to and. Ultimately, they have to, they have to provide something that, that indicates the value of what's being built, correct?
Correct.
Which is the bid most of the time.
Correct.
I just, if you leave it open and say or materials list, my concern is that you're going to get a bill of materials and that will not be anywhere near the construction cost.
Right now, as we're calculating it, we do not calculate it with labor. It's just cost of construction. It's without labor. That's how we're, how we've been charging to date.
Really?
Mm-hmm.
But the residential would be based on these codes, a hundred and thirty dollars a square foot, and maybe that's low or something like that. But that would include labor to build it?
Right. And that's just how we've done it before. I don't know what the rationale was to it, if this commission wants to do it differently. I know even with some of the larger construction, especially some of the amusement type of permits, most of those, just the construction costs are, you know, the hundred and two hundred thousand dollars, which one percent of that, it gets quite spendy. If you add labor into that, you're looking at pretty significant, because the construction costs are so much higher. You know, you're thinking of single-family residents, you know, they're two hundred to five hundred thousand dollars, where you're talking, you know, hundreds and hundreds of thousands of dollars. And that's why the percentage is different. It's point zero one versus the zero zero four. It's the one percent instead of the point four percent. So I think that takes into consideration the not counting the labor.
Oh, so you're charging a higher rate?
Yes, we're charging the one percent of the construction costs without labor versus the building permits are point four percent and it includes labor.
That's, this point zero zero four is point four percent. It's less than one percent. So is that a mistake or?
No.
So you're charging more for the commercial, one percent versus residential, which is zero point four?
Correct. But we're not charging the labor costs for a commercial. So that's why the percentage is higher. It kind of offsets that.
Okay. Well, I thought that that was maybe a.
But you know, to your point, Rich, it seems to me maybe that, that's not clear here, because it says, construction cost will be determined by bid, which typically includes labor, the bids, bill of sale, which is value, which included the labor when it was built. But I mean, I don't know if that's really, I'm not saying what you're doing is not right. I'm saying that I'm not sure this sentence really reflects that.
So like without labor, adding that?
Yes, or something. Bill of sale really wouldn't, that wouldn't apply necessarily, but bid or materials list without labor or something.
Bid without, add that language?
I mean, I don't know, really. I just, I don't have a strong opinion on how you're doing it. I'm just not sure the sentence really accurately describes.
I'm sure.
Yeah.
Well, generally, your bids include the cost of installation.
Sure.
Right.
And the permits that I've come in for some commercial building permits in, in the past in various previous work experiences and those types of things. But I've come in with bids, which included labor, and they were not just materials list. So that's why I looked at that and I thought, that doesn't, that doesn't look great. But the, you're saying the intent is, and it's always been that, that you charge that higher percent, you're charging one percent instead of point four, point four percent. And that, but then you don't basically double up on labor on the, on the commercial side. So.
Correct.
Cool. So you basically, you would say construction cost will be determined by bid, bill of sale, or materials list, all without labor costs? Is that, is that the intent?
Well, I think you would just say bid without labor costs, because bill of sale, it would be difficult to know what that was. And then materials list already kind of indicates that labor is not included.
So bid less labor. Okay. Further questions, clarifications?
Good here.
Okay. So staff recommends approval of ordinance amendment twenty dash zero four. We have a minor change on, in section A, one A. And where, was there any others? Were those just questions and answers? There weren't any other locations, correct?
Correct.
Okay. I would entertain a motion.
I'll move approval.
Second.
Motion in second. Further discussion? Seeing none, hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries. Brings us to item twenty-three, county board report.
The Board of Commissioners concurred with the Planning Commission's recommendations from the June twenty-second, two thousand twenty Planning Commission meeting.
Okay. Any questions on that? There are no folks here from the public. So we'll skip item twenty-four. Brings us to item twenty-five. Items from the staff.
And we do have one more item. I know that Michelle had introduced the new State's Attorney, but I didn't know if he wanted to introduce himself and say anything about himself quickly after I do the building permit report. I'll put him on the spot.
Yes. Well, you'll give him about twenty seconds here on the building permit report. Let him gather his thoughts.
So the building permit report for June twenty twenty, we are up quite a few. We're about double for single-family residents from this time last year. And also, our valuation is up about a million dollars and our cost per permit is up quite a bit, considering we've been accepting everything via email and Dropbox. We've been, our office has been staying pretty busy and construction seems to be maintaining.
Questions on the building permit report?
Nope, looks real good.
Okay. Colin, why don't you come on up?
Excited to be put on the spot. I'll just take off the mask so you guys can see my face for a second and then I'll put it back on. I'm really excited to work here. I'm a, I went to USD. I graduated in fifteen and then I clerked for some judges up in Aberdeen. Then I worked for Marty Jackley at the AG's office and I did county and township issues. So earlier, there was mention of noxious weeds, very familiar with noxious weeds and the statutes that deal with those. After that, I went to private practice, didn't enjoy doing divorces. So then I came out here to get some litigation experience. All of my experience really has been East River. So I've really enjoyed West River except for the hail. That has been new to me. Don't really care for it. But that's about it. I'm really excited to be out here and to transition and take over the spot for Michelle. I know I'm going to have big shoes to fill, but I really enjoy looking at the statutes and kind of figuring out where everything goes. So really excited.
Welcome.
Yep, welcome, welcome.
So when's your last day?
I start with the US Attorney's Office on August twentieth. So I would be.
So there'll be several weeks worth of transition here.
Yeah, you have to wait for background checks.
Okay. Any concerns there?
No, no.
Wake, wake. I'm just joking everybody for the record and for those watching, I'm joking. Well, we certainly appreciate all the work that you've done. And if there's anything we can do to help with the transition, let us know. Items from the membership.
Ms. Chair, I've got a couple of things. One is that, the only reason that I'm bringing this up really is that we received a public notice, or notice of public hearing on, because we're in the neighborhood on a couple of the items that were on our agenda today. And I was looking at it and I, I kind of remember a conversation we had with the staff a while, quite a while ago, actually, that there's, that it. a while, quite a while ago, actually, that there's, that it would be helpful for these, on these, if there was some information given about where the, where the individual could, where the receiver of this could go on your website or something, to get your staff report, remember? Because they come in and they don't really know much what's going on, and I thought that there was a discussion about that you could add a sentence or two saying that the staff report will be posted, you know, the Friday before the meeting, to get, you know, more information or something, and then a link, you know, to your page and so on. I mean, maybe I'm.
No, I remember that same conversation.
Yeah, and I, and I just didn't see it when I received this in the mail, so I thought I'd bring that up.
Is that, Brittany, is that something that you guys could draft up and send to the group and we'd take a quick peek?
Well, we could probably just add the language to that.
Yeah, I think it's something we could add to the notices, I mean, we added to the notices, the ability to teleconference in and things like that, so that's, I would think it'd be pretty simple.
I think it would be helpful on that.
Yeah, as I recall, the lady, there were like fifteen pages of additional information that she had no clue, you know, the person coming in with comments, so that's a good idea.
And then the other thing is, is that to see these, these public notices, I mean, I know they're published appropriately in the local newspapers, but they're not posted on your website, like the routine matter, the public, the same public notices that get sent to the newspaper, are they published on the website? Is that, is that something that could be done? I mean, because it's, you know, if you, if you're not accustomed to looking at the notices in the newspaper.
Yeah.
It just seems to me it would be kind of hand, since we're also, you know, anytime we want to know anything, we just go to a website somewhere, expect to find it. And I'm just wondering if, if there could be just something added that you just routinely, you know, is the scent of the newspaper, it gets put on that, on your, on your page, you know, under some, would that be a big job, or is it doable? It seems like it'd just be really handy.
Aren't they all in the agenda packet?
Yeah, well, no, no, but I mean, like, for example, and here's an example. So I just happened to be reading the notices in the paper, and I learned that these ordinances were going to be on our agenda today. And so I asked, I mean, I emailed and you responded, and you sent me the materials a little bit earlier, so I had a better chance to look at them and think about them and so on. And I, and I just thought, you know, it'd be kind of handy for us or the public or whomever, to periodically scan and see what the public notices are, to see if there's anything of interest. I mean, maybe they're already up there, and I'm not, I'm just missing them.
It's not, and that's why I was looking at it, because this is our homepage, essentially, we would have to have some work with IT, almost like we have our planning commission pages, you know, where you see.
Right.
Well, how often are public notices given? I mean, a dozen a week, or two a month, or?
No, just when we do the ordinance amendments.
I see.
Notice of public, these notices of public hearing.
But, yeah, I mean, those other, and other items too, but are you just only talking about the ordinance amendment?
It just seems to me that when you send it to the newspaper, whatever you send to the newspaper, you just post on your website, so that it's, we don't have to go buy a newspaper.
So we basically would create like a webpage on our page, you know, like a sidebar or something like that, that would have public notices. The reason we do it in the newspaper, because we have to, the statute requires it, even though, and you're correct, probably most people look online for things anymore, so it would be something that we would have to work with IT, and our office could put something up there that we could upload them on a regular basis.
And it's not anything that is, I mean, I don't mean to overhype it, it's, it's not like it's critical necessarily, but I think it certainly would be handy as a way for the public to stay more informed and easy, it'd be easy for the public.
If you go back over to public info, did I not see that briefly, when you go up, scroll up, right, 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 one more. Down to public info.
Like here?
Oh, right.
One more.
Oh, this one?
Public notices.
I think those are the ones that come.
From like Commissioner's office.
From the Commissioner's office.
That's not our site.
Yeah, that's.
For our department.
That's not our department, but we could, the tab, you know, for planning that we have, because our notices are separate. And it's under a different. Well, I mean, aren't they under a different section? Well, they're combined with sections of statute, right? So we have some that are under, because Holly doesn't do the public notices for her office, Jerry does. So those public notices that are on there would be stuff that comes out of the commission office that Holly does that are separate from Jerry, because she, Holly doesn't do our notices or any planning item notices. That's kind of what I was getting at.
Right.
But they could go to the planning website, look at the notices that are scheduled for the next agenda, is that what you're thinking, Kathy?
Yeah, I think you have to publish them, what, in, you have to publish them twice in the newspaper, is that right?
No.
Just one time?
Well, each item is different of how.
Okay.
They don't have all the same.
I see.
Conditional use permits are different than variances that are different than ordinance.
Well, I, I just think, I guess it, to me, rather than making it too confusing, you just follow the same practice that you do with the newspaper, rather, but, you know, so when you send them to the newspaper, you just put them on your website kind of thing, you know? And not to, not to create new rules, just follow that same approach, but. Whatever, I mean, and I don't want to make this too complicated, I just, it's just a suggestion, so we'll take it from there.
I think you could still put it underneath the public info, one, where public notices are, and you just say Board of Commissioners and then planning, unless there's a specific format that's required to be on there.
Yeah, and now, we'd have to work with the commission office to see what they're, you know, what they put underneath there, but, you know, it's something that staff could discuss and maybe bring back something to this commission.
That would be great. Any other items from the membership? I may be traveling on July twenty-seventh. It's still in the process of being discussed, but I'm giving you a heads up, I'm a maybe at this point. I'll follow up. Seeing, hearing, nothing else. So motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and second, further discussion. Seeing none, hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, no. We're adjourned.